Good morning, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Bon après-midi, dames et messieurs. If we ask members of council to take their seats, we'll start the meeting in one minute. On va commencer la réunion.
We're going to start the meeting in a few minutes.
Good morning or good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Ottawa City Council meeting for the 10th of July 2019. Bienvenue à la conseil municipale de la ville d'Ottawa pour le 10e.
Welcome to this meeting of the municipal council.
For a moment of personal reflection. As our meeting time changed, councillor McKenney's guest is not able to be here, so we'll reschedule that person for the singing.
Singing.
So we want you to sing "Oh, Canada." So if you could remain standing, we'll have a recorded version of "Oh, Canada." Merci. It is an honor to invite Rasha Jacob to the podium for this council's City Builder Award presentation, and also to welcome Gloucester Southgate City Councillor Diane Deans, who is Rasha's city councillor. So welcome, and nice to have you here. You brought your fan club with you? Welcome, and it's nice to see family and friends here. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the family and friends and associates of Rasha who are here with us today in good numbers. This award recognizes people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism or exemplary action. Rasha is recognized for volunteer work with the city of Ottawa and in the Albion-Hetherington community. Rasha has been a volunteer in the Heatherington community and has worked tirelessly with neighbors to build a safer, more vibrant, and welcoming community. She has proven to be a leader through her work with Syrian refugees and her efforts to create a safer and more welcoming community in general. Rasha spearheaded numerous events to bring together neighbours, diverse cultural communities, and funding partners to facilitate better programming for the residents of Albion-Hetherington. In addition to organizing community special events, she's been instrumental in leveraging funding for community projects, including the Community Mural Programme and the Community Gardens. She's helped us to secure a United Way Sparks grant to provide monthly healthy cooking workshops for community members, and she participates in training and development workshops to enhance her ability to help the community. Rasha successfully co-facilitated the Building Better Revitalized Neighborhoods consultation, and she was asked to sit on the Community Development Framework Learning Forum Planning Committee. With kindness and skill, Rasha has always played a huge role in creating a safer and more welcoming community for everyone. J'aimerais cesser cette occasion pour remercier Rasha.
I would like to take this occasion to thank Rasha for her many contributions to the community and the entire city.
Very much for your many contributions to the community and the entire city. And on behalf of your city councillor Diane Deans and all members of council, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award for a job very well done. Congratulations.
I'm a little bit shy, I can't say more, but I would like to say thank you so much for everybody, and thank you, thank you everybody for my teamwork there, especially for my partner in crime, Yasmin Abdullahi, and thank you so much, and thank you everybody. Thank you.
Short but sweet. Thank you. Well, congratulations again. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Conseil Lulov.
Ici.
Councillor Dudas.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Suds.
Here.
Councillor Elshanthiri.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
You see.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Conseil Clouty.
Present.
Conseil Blay. Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Meehan.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Si.
Le coeur mettez-y, Monsieur Lemar.
Merci. Adoption de process velbo. Confirmation of minutes for the regular council meeting of June 26, 2019. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêts. There none? No. Communications and petitions as presented. Regrets: Councillor Blay advised that he'd be absent from the city council meeting of July 10, 2019. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important presentation de rapport. Conseil Menard, appui par conseil DeRousse, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mayor. That the report from the Deputy City Treasurer, Corporate Finance, entitled "City Debencher Issuance", the report from the selection panel, Planning Advisory Committee, entitled "Planning Advisory Committee Appointment", Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, Report 5, Audit Committee, Report 4, Standing Committee on Environment Protection, Water and Wastewater Management, Report 4, Planning Committee, Report 10, and the report from the city clerk and solicitor, entitled "Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act: Explanation requirements at the city council meeting of June 26, 2019, be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report 6, including any recommendations arising from the committee's meeting of July 10, 2019, and that the petition listed on agenda with respect to Brentwood Park be received."
On the motion. Carried, adopté. Merci. Reports: City Clerk and Solicitor, Grefier Municipal et Avocat Général, Planning Advisory Committee Appointment, Committee Consultatif Territoire Nomination, Member residing in rural area of Ottawa, T. Bradbrook Smith. Carried. Corporate Services, Service Général, City Debencher Issuance, Émission de Debencheur de la ville. Carried. Committee Reports: Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, Report Number 5, Rapport numéro 5 du Comité de l'Agriculture et des Affaires Rurales. Item Number 3, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, part of 3194 Donnelly Drive. Modification réglement de zonage 3, 1, 9, 4, Promenade Donnelly. Carried. Audit Committee Report Number 4, Rapport numéro 4 du Comité de la Vérification, Office of the Auditor General, Investigation of OC Transport Closing Allowance, enquête sur l'allocation d'abord de OC Transpôts. Carried. Item Number 5, Office of the Auditor General, Review of the Emergency Shelter Programme, Use of Specific Hotel. Bureau de Vérificateurs Général examine de programme d'aide d'urgence et d'immersion dans l'hôtel visé. Hold. Is it several questions, councillor? Do you like to... Okay, we'll come back to that. Item 6, Office of the Auditor General, Investigation at Cash Theft Incident, Meridian Theaters at... Meridian, rather, Theaters at Centre Point. Bureau de Vérificateurs Général enquête sur l'incident de vol des fonds théâtre Meridian de Centre Point. Carried. Item Number 7, Office of the Auditor General, Report on the Fraud and Waste Hotline. Bureau de Vérificateurs Général rapporte sur la ligne directe de fraude et d'abus. Received? Received. Item Number 8, Solid Waste Master Plan Roadmap. Fait de route de plan de directeur de la gestion des déchets solides. Carried. Item Number 9, Comments on the Reducing Litter and Waste in Our Communities Discussion Paper. Commentaire sur les documents de travail réduit les déchets dans nos collectivités. Carried. Fedco, Report Number 6, arising from the Fedco meeting of July 10. Item 10, Institutions Designated as Eligible for a 2019 Annual Levy pursuant to Section 323, 1, 2, 3, and 5 of the Municipal Act. Do you want to ask it right now? Councillor Fleury's mic, please.
I don't foresee an issue. I was just, for clarity's sake, could we just understand why the threshold of $75, and why was... How was that amount established in the first place?
The amount is established by the province, and it was set back in the '80s and hasn't changed since, despite numerous representations from municipal governments to increase it. So it's a provincial number.
And what's... Have we fact... Have we ever put a number to where we believe the inflation would be today?
I believe we have, and we can provide that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can speak to that, councillor, because I think it was during the Peterson government that it was set at $75, and AMO has been trying to get the number to go up, to reflect the costs, and we still continue to lobby through AMO to get the number higher than 75. So on the report. Carried, adopté. Charitable Bingo and Gaming Revitalization Initiative. Projet de revitalisation des bingo et des jeux de bien façons. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 10, Rapport numéro 10 du Comité de l'urbanisme. Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 10, O'Blates Avenue and Sites Designated. Mixed Use Medium Rise in the Old Ottawa East Secondary Plan. Modification au plan officiel et règlement de zonage 10, avenue O'Blates, dont la désignation est Est Zone d'utilisation polyvalente de hôtés moyens dans le plan secondaire de vieille Ottawa East. Hold that. Item 13, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 258 Carruthers Avenue. Modification réglement de zonage 2, 5, 8, avenue Carruthers. Descent by councillor Fleury. Carried. Descent by Menard, Leaper, and McKenney. Item 14, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendments 16 and 20, Hamilton Avenue North. Councillor Harder and Tierney have a technical amendment. If you'd like to introduce that, councillor Harder, please.
Thank you. It is just that, a technical amendment. Therefore, be it resolved that Document 2 be revised by replacing the text. The seventh and eighth story will be set back 9.0 metres from the front property line, which, if mirrored to the other side of the street, would represent a width of 36.3 metres. Replace that with the text. The seventh and eighth story will be set back 8.0 metres from the front property line, which, if mirrored to the other side of the street, would represent a width of 34.3 metres.
Okay, on the technical amendment. Carried. On the report as amended. Descent by couns... The same for councillors? Okay. And councillor Le... Egli. Apologies. Okay. Thank you. Item Number 15, Zoning Bylaw Amendments 716 and 770 Brookfield Road. Modification réglement de zonage 7, 6 et 7, 7, 0 chemin, Brookfield. Carried. Councillor Brockington, is that you? You're okay. Item 16, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 1117 Longfields Drive, 1034 McGarry Terrace. Modification au plan officiel et règlement de zonage 11, 17, Promenade Longfields et 10, 34, Terre McGarry. Carried. Item 17, Front-Ending Report, March Road Sanitary Sewer and Water Main, Canada North Urban Expansion Area. Rapport d'entente préhablable et goût sanitaire conduit d'eau principale au chemin March, zone d'expansion urbaine de Canada Nord. Councillor, you're good with that? Carried? Carried. Item 18, Front-Ending Reports, Cambrian Road and Appolin Way, Delphinus Avenue, Bank Street and Dunn Skipper Drive, Litram Road and Kelly Farm Drive, Robert Grant Avenue and Fernbrook Road, Didsbury Drive and Campo Drive, Spratt Road and Borbridge Avenue. Rapport d'entente chemin Cambrian et voie Appolon, avenue Delphinus, rue Bank et promenade Dunn Skipper, chemin Litram et promenade Kelly Farm, avenue Robert Grant et chemin Fernbank, promenade Didsbury et promenade Campo, chemin Spratt et avenue Borbridge. You learn a lot of street names in this committee. Carried? Adopté. Item 19, Removal Properties from the Heritage Registry 2016-2018. Spression de propriété de registre de patrimoine de mille six, de mille diswit. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No one? So, motion to accept the bulk consent agenda as presented. Carried. Okay, so we'll go back to our first-held item. Councillor Fleury asks that we hold Item 7 on the Office of the Auditor General Report on the Fraud and Waste Hotline. Councillor Fleury.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, I don't know if the auditor general is joining us. Okay. Mr. Mayor, my time's going, but I'll wait for him to... Mr. Mayor. Merci, merci, Monsieur Hughes. Thank you for the substantial report, and glad to see that city staff agree to most of the recommendations. Want to maybe hear from you specifically relating to the impact matter. So there's... The city had embarked in an agreement with motel, and the motel then expanded into the residential zone. And in your... As part of your report, you talk about the impact, but I wonder if you didn't... I didn't hear from you specific matters relating to the various authorities that the city has and the oversight of that when those decisions are made. So I don't know if you could maybe elaborate as per what you were meaning on the comparison between a residential fee and a commercial fee and the wider implications.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor. I think the staff and council are aware that there is a difference between the methods of valuation for residential properties and the methods of valuation for commercial properties, as well as the tax rate for residential properties and the tax rate for commercial properties. And what we were suggesting with the number of units that... The number of properties that were being used to meet the city's needs. The use of those properties has changed, and we were recommending that city staff, with the assistance of impact, determine what the appropriate tax clash should be for those properties with this new use.
And just to wrap up on that piece, you also highlighted some building code infractions, but I didn't hear of bylaw or zoning violations. Is that something that your team looked at?
Mr. Mayor, our recommendations, we recommended that staff ensure that the properties being used were in compliance with property standards and in compliance with zoning regulations. And we know, for example, that there were discussions between the auditors and staff with responsibility for zoning and responsibility for property standards, and then there were further discussions between city staff and those responsible for zoning and those responsible for property standards.
Okay. Thank you for your work. Where I was going with it is the city's currently reviewing short-term rentals, and we are enforcing illegal Airbnbs or other postings, which, to me, would be very similar types of zoning violations than this one, as this one, so...
Mr. Mayor, that could very well be a similar case, and the same recommendation would apply to those areas.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, question to staff. Madam Gray, we met this morning. Thank you for your time, and thank you for responding to those questions. I am happy to see the city take the step of conducting an RFP. I've shared with you that I believe the importance of doing the monthly piece. But the auditor general spoke to the delegation of authority, and I want to hear from you. I mean, we don't want to create an environment where you have red tape and that families are left on the street. In the same vein, we also want to have proper reporting on those spendings and those families. So want to hear from you what's the plan? I know that through CPS, we had put some measures relating to capturing of the numbers, and want to see if there's an appetite to maybe increase that reporting for that issue.
Mr. Mayor, so the current process that allows us to move into the RFP is really going to give you the added control that I think you're looking for, for value for money. So that's a big piece, and that's what we're hoping to do. Value for money, and also the expansion of sites that we... or residences that we have available for newcomers in our city. The other issue is around the delegated authority, is we currently have a direction to staff to look at measures and reporting requirements in the housing and homelessness, and that's coming to committee CPS in the month of August. So I would recommend or suggest that we include that discussion around the specific measures that you're looking to enhance in that in alignment as well with the Housing and Homelessness strategic directions, that we make sure that council's getting the strategic measures and information that they need to make the decisions and feel confident in their delegated authority.
Yeah. I recognize you're new in the role, and I enjoy working with you, so I'm happy to hear that. Want to maybe highlight what I see as the issue. Somewhere in 2016, we started to see a peak in use, and that meant that there was more volume of residents staying in mot... families staying in motels, and that also meant there was an additional cost. And we've... It felt like we jumped a queue now, and we're... It's like a new baseline. And I question my role and the role of committee and council as per the reporting of that. So really would like, you know, as there is a change in landscape, numbers and cost, that there's also the appropriate reporting to us, right, at council, so that we understand the plan, so that we understand the delegation and the cost involved with that. So I hope that you take the measure in terms of reporting into directions.
Merci. Est-ce qu'il y a des autres questions? Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, on one last item here on...
The remaining item that's still floating is that there was overspill outside of the motel into residential, and that's been clear, and staff have spoken to... There are currently eight identified properties. I want to understand how many bedrooms is that, and what's our plan as part of the RFP process to bring in corrective measures?
Mr. Mayor, so the intent of the RFP process is to limit the scope to hotels and motels, and that would really be the focus of the RFP, is to expand our capacity so that we're not taking residential units out of the rental market. And that really is our intent, to be able to reduce the number of those rental units and to ensure that we have sufficient capacity to deal with emergency services. So those units are currently being reduced and will continue to be reduced as we have alternate solutions in the emergency shelter component.
So when the results... Just to be clear, when the results of the RFP come back, are we satisfied that we will be able to resolve that anomaly?
Not knowing the results of the final RFP, but that is our intent, and that is the purpose of the RFP, to do, in fact, that.
Okay, thank you.
Merci. Est-ce qu'il y a des autres questions? Any other questions? On item number five. Carried. Okay, the next item that was held is Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 10, O'Blates Avenue. Councillor Menard, you held this.
Yeah, thanks very much, Mayor. I feel it's important to provide some context for councillors on this item. The community, the former owners of this land, the O'Blate Fathers Cathay Gordon, St. Paul University, city planners, the previous head of the planning committee, FOTEN and other consultants, Mr. Paul Owen, had engaged in a four-year process and thousands of hours to ensure that these lands we're talking about today were developed with care. It meant 26 acres of previously heavily utilized green space in the middle of an urban neighborhood would be intensified. The community did not fight this development site. They welcomed the new density, and they welcomed on the site both tall and medium-sized buildings alike. They put their trust in a city process to ensure that when it was developed, there would be a plan that they could rely on and be respected. Furthermore, they didn't just create a community design plan. Next steps were taken to ensure that a secondary plan with official plan weight was enacted. And this wasn't in the 1970s. This was just a few years ago. And so when the developer purchased this land, they knew the plan. In fact, they adopted it with promotional material prepared by themselves. The 3D concept in the display center, the community meetings with PowerPoints, the press clippings, which all showed what was agreed upon in the area in front of the most historic building of Old Ottawa East. And so I put it to you that this was a classic bait and switch, what happened in this community. And so, to be clear, this isn't just one building that's being changed. We're not just changing a building here. This is over 13 acres of land that's being changed. This community has accepted height on these lands in the areas that were properly planned for that secondary plan, and they also compromised on other areas where it wasn't planned, but it made sense. They're not opposed to height. They want a well-planned community and to be shown respect. This is being done under the auspices that the current secondary plan has surface-level ambiguity, or if you will, a loophole that might allow for this to occur. But do you know what our professional legal staff said about this when I inquired with them? They said that it is very likely that the original secondary plan would stand up at LPAT. So all of those hours of work, all of that investment of time, that would stand up at LPAT when it was being defended. Now, I know some of you, maybe in the more laissez-faire camp, might think to yourself, oh geez, the developer owns all of this land. What is the big deal here? But you should know that St. Paul University owns a huge portion of this land, and they've written to you. They've written to you indicating that they oppose these changes, and they're a major landowner. So why are we doing this? What's the point of doing this for a developer when another major institution in our city doesn't want this change to be made? And it's sending a signal to the public. We're in the midst of an official plan update. We want the public in our communities to engage in that process and feel as though there's weight to their deliberations and more teeth as a result of it. How does it look to be allowing an amendment ostensibly because the developer wishes it, despite years of understanding and agreement between multiple parties? You can't reasonably go back to residents in your communities and tell them to engage in community design plans and secondary plans, or even on the official plan, if this goes ahead in good conscience. The Urban Design Review Panel has also signaled their concerns about relatability with the most historic building in Old Ottawa East. So what gains is this providing? I'm asking you, when you're voting on this, why are you voting for it? What gains do you think it's giving the city? It's not new affordable housing. It's not increased density. It's not more certainty or predictability in the planning process. It's not encouragement for communities to participate in city planning exercises. So what is it that's driving you to approve this? I know the developer has been in the hallways doing a good job of lobbying. They've done a good job of that on this one. But I'm asking you to side with the public on this. In fact, Mayor, you know, a lot of people in this space declare a conflict of interest when small items come up, for things like family members on a board. They'll step aside. They're not going to vote on issues when that happens. But in this case, I know it's not against our rules, but I'd like to request that people who have actually taken campaign funds from the developer, executives in this matter, don't vote on this item because of the perception... don't vote on this item because of the perception of influence. I'm asking you to stand out of your seat and not vote on this if you've taken from executives of this developer in this last election. And so I'd like to call for yays and nays on the vote, Mayor, when we do take it on the item, and I encourage my colleagues to vote against this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I wasn't going to lead off with anything, but after that last comment, that continues since the last meeting that we had, a planning, in particular from Counselor Menard, I'd have to ask of anyone who took any, we just passed Solid Waste, I wonder whether anybody from any environmental group, unions, or anything else that might be associated. As long as the donations that we take are legal, there's nothing wrong with who takes what. And I'm not challenging anybody else who votes any other way, whether you vote for environmental things, that I may not.
Sorry, excuse me, members of the gallery, please, we have a member of council speaking, and Counselor Menard was not interrupted, so I appreciate your consideration. Counselor Harder has the floor.
And I'd like a few of my seconds back. I wouldn't have started with that at all if the confrontation did not continue, Mr. Mayor. I think because of the comments that he makes, I think it's really important to set the stage. It's very early in this term, and I don't want to see a repeat of this. So there has been a lot of commentary on this application, which Planning Committee approved on June 27th, and there was a strong turnout of residents opposed to the development. Again, we have them out here today, thank you for coming. Some public commentary has pushed the notion that every development application at City Hall gets a rubber stamp approval. That's really not fair. It's not fair to planning staff, and it's not fair to the members of Planning Committee and this council. Every week, development applications at City Hall are refused, but the public never hears about them. Residents and companies come in regularly with development projects of all kinds. That's their right, under the Ontario Planning Act. City planning staff listen to and review each proposal. They work with the applicants and discuss how projects, certain projects in fact, might not fit with the city and the provincial planning policies. And they regularly have to explain that these plans cannot be supported or approved. But these refused projects never land at Planning Committee and Council, or at the Committee of Adjustment. Instead, the city works privately with residents to explain planning policies and why a development can't be approved. In such cases often, the would-be applicants end up not filing a formal application. By doing that, early consultation or planning staff save residents and Ottawa companies many thousands of dollars and a lot of wasted time. But at the end of the day, these are all development ideas that are turned down. So I think we can dismiss the notion that all development applications get approved. Specifically on the Greystone Village application on 10 O'Blates Avenue, I will note some facts. The question is whether a nine-story building at this site makes sense in light of the city and provincial planning policies that staff and we are bound to follow. The Old Ottawa East secondary plan is unclear on maximum height for the site, with policy suggesting a limit of either six or nine stories. The parcel in question is within an area designated for mixed-use, medium-rise buildings, but there's no specific wording related to this designation in the secondary plan. The official plan amendment clarifies language in the secondary plan to permit heights between three and nine stories in areas designated for mixed-use, medium-rise buildings. On-site, the site-specific zoning amendment for 10 O'Blates Avenue includes setbacks as well as added height, changing the maximum height from 20 meters to 29 meters. The plan incorporates setbacks and step backs to minimize the impact on existing buildings. The plan for the building locates its tallest portion away from the six- and four-story building across O'Blates Avenue known as Corners on Main. Our planning staff consider the proposed redevelopments consistent with the urban design guidelines for traditional main streets and with the official plan. It proposes infill with a mid-rise building that is compatible with the surroundings, respects the height transition, and fosters pedestrian-oriented development and active frontages. We did hear from Mr. Hoban, the architect, you know, as to why he had the shape exactly the way he has set it, and it's because they can add increased parking, it's because he was conscious of the grandelay and the tree canopy there, and making sure that that was sustained. And because of the involvement with the community overall those years, which was an awesome project, one of the things that they looked for is a grocery store. Having the added parking will facilitate that. Putting in the community gym that they will build is definitely an added feature. Giving back 60, giving back the multi-use pathway along the river, for heaven's sakes, that nobody in that community, I know it for a fact, and you know why I know it, myself in my 68 years have never been able to walk there before, is absolutely in my mind a gift to that community. And finally, the arrangement that they have with the school will further facilitate some of the desires that were put forward by the community at the time. So for these reasons, and the reasons I first of all stated with regard to the Planning Act, I support this application, I encourage all of you to support the good infill development. It is really a showcase in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Menard, you've already spoken, so you'll have a second chance. No, I'm sorry. Anyone else wish to speak on the item? Mr. Willis, do you have any comments on the item? So Counselor Menard has called yays and nays on the staff recommendation before us.
Counselor Gower. Counselor DeRusse. Counselor Harder.
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Luloff.
Oui.
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Counselor King.
Non.
Counselor Menard.
Non.
Conseil Fleury.
Non.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Non.
Counselor Hubley.
Yes.
Counselor Suds.
Yes.
Counselor Deans.
Non.
Counselor Dudas.
Yes.
Counselor Leaper.
Non.
Counselor McKenney.
Non.
Counselor Egli.
Yes.
Counselor Brockington.
Non.
Counselor Mihen.
Oh.
Counselor Mihen.
Non.
Counselor Moffett.
Yes.
Conseil Blay, Counselor Tierney.
Oui.
Mayor Watson. Fourteen yays, nine nays.
Motion to adopt a report, Counselor Menard, please, seconded by Counselor DeRusse. Counselor Menard?
Yep, that, the report from the deputy city treasurer, corporate finance, entitled "City Debencher Issuence", the report from the selection panel, planning advisory committee, entitled "Planning Advisory Committee Appointment, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, Report Five, Audit Committee, Report Four, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management, Report Four, Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report Six, Planning Committee, Report Ten, and the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled "Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act: Explanation requirements at the City Council Meeting of June 26, 2019, be received and adopted as amended."
On the motion, carry. Motions of which notice have been previously given, Counselor Fleury, seconded by Counselor Leaper, please. And I have here Counselor Brockington, do you have a motion that you want to introduce, depending on the vote, or do you want to introduce it ahead of time? Is this an amendment?
No, the motion is dependent on Counselor Fleury's motion being successful.
Sorry?
So if Counselor Fleury's motion is approved, then I would introduce it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Before I read the motion, Mr. Mayor, I just, je voulais simplement dire que la motion est traduite donc sur les.
Just want to say that it's been translated, it's on the screen, you have the French version on the screen, if you're interested.
At its meeting of June 27, 2018, council adopted the following recommendation in respect of the redevelopment of the Chateau Laurier at 1 Rita Street. That Council I approved the application to alter the Chateau Laurier 1 Rita Street, a property designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act, based on plans received on May 9th and 30th, 2018, on the condition that staff be directed to work with the applicant to make the proposed addition more visually compatible with the existing Chateau Laurier prior to the site plan approval as follow. A, meaningfully increasing the use of Indiana limestone cladding on the building exterior to reduce its contrast and enhance its bond with the existing building. B, modifying the addition by sculpting, recessing, and breaking up the unrelieved uniformity of the north facade using elements and forms that are specifically drawn from and relate to the existing Chateau Laurier rich palette of forms. C, altering the architectural expression on the northwest and east facades to introduce fenestration patterns, details, and geometric proportions that are specifically drawn from and relate to the existing Chateau Laurier elements. D, the applicant revised the plans received on May 9th and 30th, 2018 to reflect the design changes outlined above. E, that the general manager of Planning, Infrastructure, Economic Development Department be delegated the authority to approve such design changes to the heritage permit. Whereas the Chateau Laurier is an iconic, prominent, and much beloved architectural and historical landmark in the city of Ottawa and the nation's capital region, whereas the Chateau Laurier is a historic designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act, a national historic site, and an irreplaceable element in the visual setting of the Rita Canal UNESCO World Heritage Site, the parliamentary precinct, Major's Hill Park, Confederation Square, and Confederation Boulevard. And whereas City Council adopted the Parks Canada's document Standards and Guidelines for the Conservation of Historic Places in Canada in 2008, and whereas Standard 11 of the document stated that the additions must be physically and visually compatible with the historic place, and whereas compatible is generally agreed to mean able to exist or work together without conflict, and whereas the proposed addition is sufficiently visually compatible with the Chateau Laurier historic site, and whereas modification to the design of the proposed addition are necessary to ensure its visual compatibility with the existing Chateau Laurier, an iconic heritage landmark in the city of Ottawa and the national capital, as per City Council's direction on June 27, 2018, whereas the applicant has failed to respect the subtle verticality of the existing building by providing a dominant vertical expression in the addition, which fails to be subordinate to the existing building, therefore failing to incorporate the geometric proportions appropriately. And whereas the applicant has failed to meet the conditions set by council in June 2018, notably the modification of the design for visually compatibility, visual compatibility with the historic hotel, by referencing such elements as patterns, details, and proportions of the Chateau Laurier by ensuring that the application is compliant with the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places, be it resolved that Council I determines that the applicant has failed to fulfill the condition imposed by council in respect of the application for approval to alter 1 Rita Street. Two, further determines that as the conditions have not been fulfilled, that the conditional heritage permit issued in respect to a Chateau Laurier redevelopment at 1 Rita is now void and of no effects. And three, revokes the delegation to the general manager, Planning, Infrastructure, and Economic Development Department to approve design changes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I have questions to staff and comments, and I want to wrap up, so I want to make sure that I have the right procedural. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I finished reading the motion. I have questions to staff, and I also, obviously.
So you have five minutes in total.
And I'll be able to wrap up at the end?
Yes, you will.
Thank you. Okay.
Counselor Leaper?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to use my five minutes for comments, questions to staff, and then for wrap-up?
Yeah, but, but.
You want me to get on the speaker's list?
You have to wrap up at the end. The wrap-up's done at the end of the.
But I have questions to staff, and I.
As you know, the rules call for five minutes for questions and comments. So you had your five minutes. I wasn't sure why you were reading the motion, but that was your choice to use that.
I introduced the motion, Mr. Mayor. I just, I introduced the motion.
You have an opportunity to wrap up, and you can ask questions or.
I don't understand, procedurally, I've only introduced the motion, which I've read out loud, and then I have questions to staff. I'll respect my five minutes, and then I'll wrap up at the end.
You can do that, we have other people ahead of you that want to speak.
Okay, so if I get on the speaker's list, I'll also be able to wrap up?
No, you'll be able to do everything at the end. The wrap-up is.
Well, I have a question to the clerk then, on procedure. So, Mr. Clerk, I've introduced the motion, I have questions to staff on the motion, and I also want to have the opportunity to wrap up. So procedurally, what's the best way for me to proceed?
The mayor has made a ruling on this matter, therefore I have no opinion on it.
Okay, so it's challenge of the chair. Who is challenging? Who is it?
Counselor Leaper.
Is there a second required?
Challenge.
No. Okay, so shall the chair's ruling be sustained? So if you support my ruling, you vote yes, if not, you vote no.
I've done every challenge last time at council, and I'll see if we can vote this time.
Mr.
Can we get the clerk's microphone on, please?
Thank you.
So my ruling's been challenged by Counselor Leaper, and if you sustain the chair, support my ruling, you vote yes, if you don't, you vote no. Shall the chair be sustained? Okay, so yays and nays?
Counselor Gower. Counselor DeRusse. Counselor Harder.
Yes.
Counselor Elshantiiri. Counselor Shirelli. Can, we have the microphones for all members of council, please. Counselor Luloff.
Non.
Counselor Cloutier.
Non.
Counselor King.
Non.
Hold on.
No.
Wait. Turn the, turn the mic on.
Counselor Menard.
Non.
Counselor Fleury.
Non.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Non.
Counselor Hubley.
Yes.
Counselor Suds.
Yes.
Counselor Deans.
Non.
Counselor Dudas.
Non.
Counselor Leaper.
Non.
Counselor McKenney.
Non.
Counselor Egli.
Non.
Counselor Brockington.
Non.
Counselor Mihen.
Non.
Counselor Moffett.
Non.
Conseil Blay, Counselor Tierney.
Yes.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
I think seven yays, sixteen nays.
Counselor Fleury.
Merci du droit de parole, Monsieur Mayor.
Sorry, folks, as many of you know, we have rules, and we do not entertain applause, or cheers, or jeers, so we respect that you respect our rules. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to set the context, I'd like to thank the community, friends of the Chateau Laurier. For example, I have a couple of questions for staff about the process and legal issues as well. I'll start with Mr. O'Connor.
You presented a memo to council based on the applicant threatening counsel of court litigations. Following that, we received legal, counterlegal arguments from the Chateau Laurier, but never received your legal interpretation of what that meant. Could you maybe speak to the position of council relating to litigation, both, you presented the applicant's side, but from a community appeals process?
Mr. Mayor, as I understand the councillor's questions, he's asked that an answer be expressed from what, from a city perspective, those opposed to the redevelopment might do, and if I've misunderstood that, I apologize. If the motion were to carry, then I would speculate that the community would not feel the need to take legal action. If the motion were to fail, then those opposed to the development might wish to take legal action. It's not clear to me that they would have standing to do so. It would have been, it's a decision within the jurisdiction of council, and therefore I, in my opinion, it would be very unlikely they would succeed in challenging it. The way they would do so is they would launch an application in Superior Court, but as I said, Mr. Mayor, I don't see it as likely being that they would be successful.
Actually, my point wasn't on success or non-success, it was on perhaps the cost components, because in the memo, it really speaks to the litigation components.
components if we are to pass the motion, but not the financial risk if we aren't going, if we don't pass the motion relating to community appeals.
So with respect to the financial aspect, if council does not adopt the motion and there is a legal challenge, then of course, there would be two parties who would be in opposition to the community, LARCO and the city, and therefore, and the city would be able to rely on staff advice. So rather than the $100,000 that I estimated for legal cost, I think we'd be in the $25,000 to $50,000 range.
Mr. Willis, questions relating to the staff time and the costs from the city as part of this application. So we received in, somewhere in 2017, the application. Your team has done their best to, to ensure that council's wishes are respected, and I want to thank them for it. But I want to, I want to hear from you relating to how much this applicant has cost the city relating to their staff time and value.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Mr. Curry to respond to this because he has compiled that information to my request.
Mayor, be difficult for me to quantify the amount of actual staff time in dollars. However, there has been three dedicated staff on this file for the last three years. My colleague Allison Hamlin, who is a planner, my colleague Sally Koots, who is our senior heritage planner, and our colleague Randolph Wang, who is an urban designer. Since council approved the conditional heritage permit last June, we have had 16 meetings with the applicant, and I would say that over the last three years, there has been, approximately 200 meetings have been held, both with the applicant and internally on this file.
And are you able to identify what that would mean in terms of staff time? Is that more than a full FTE, half FTE? What's double FTE? What's the, what's the count that this applicant, application has cost onto us?
Again, Mayor, I can't quantify it in dollar value, but this has been the number one file for the heritage unit for the past three years. It's fair to say that it has been a full-time job for someone for the last three years.
Okay. I want to understand, in June of 2018, there's debates relating to the intents of the motion of, that was unanimously carried here at council. What was the staff interpretation of those objectives? And how was that rated? Because I'm confused. We, staff were in support of that, the application. Council was trying to redirect, redirect the efforts. We made a political decision to pass a motion, and then now it's staff interpreting the political component of that motion. So I just want to understand what depths have been put into, to ensure that the wishes of council were achieved as, as part of that vote.
So, Mr. Mayor, on June 27, 2018, council approved the issuance of the heritage permit. It's important to note that that permit approved the footprint of the building, the building's massing, or its shape, the seven-story height, and the landscaping, and we issued on July 3, 2018, the conditional permit with a three-year expiry. In setting the conditions for the permit, to answer the counselor's question directly, staff and the applicant understood that what needed to change was the design or the skin of the building, the amount of limestone, breaking up the northern facade facing the park, and improving the compatibility with existing heritage attributes of the Chateau Laurier. In other words, council gave us and the applicant direction on the what, but not the how. Since the beginning of the application three years ago, the applicant, the architect, and the owners of the property have been firm in their resolve that the building be as contemporary as possible while being respectful of the chateau. Our job, with increased focus with your direction last year, was to work with the applicant on achieving compatibility using all the policy and design tools that we have available. We do not have the authority here to dictate architectural style. Out of the meetings, there have been countless sketches, models, and elevations reviewed by city with planning, city staff rather, planning architectural and heritage expertise, and what we have before you in our view is an amended design that has more obvious parallels to the chateau achieved through the materials, and I acknowledge subtle, however deliberate, architectural cues to the chateau achieved through the building expression. I'd be happy to walk council through, Mr. Mayor, those amendments that were made in the last year, if that will be helpful to the counselor and council.
Do members of council want to hear this? Okay, Mr. Curry.
I will turn it over to Ms. Koots, our senior heritage planner, to walk us through those amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to reiterate, after the motion, it was determined that there was three major directions to take the design in. One, to increase the use of Indiana limes, limestone to break up the uniformity of the north facade, that's the facade that faces Majors Hill Park, and to alter the expression of the addition. So as, as Mr. Curry mentioned, there were a number of meetings that were held with staff internally and with the architects as a result of a trip to Toronto and further discussions, and plus the UDRP also looked at it. So in the end, the, the ways in which the, the conditions of the heritage permit have been complied with is that, that the amount of Indiana limestone on the building was substantially increased, which was part A of the motion, and on conditions B and C, the north facade was redesigned so that rather being one long wall, it, the composition was broken into three unequal parts, the east and west pavilion, as we call them, which serve as extensions to the east and west wings of the Chateau Laurier, and a connector in between. This also introduced some asymmetry, which reflects the asymmetrical character of the historic hotel. Also designing the east and west pavilions to be different from one another in length and setback from the property line, again, to further break down the, the uniformity of the north facade and to reflect the asymmetry of the building. Another important move was to introduce the tripartite horizontal division that is found in the Chateau Laurier, so with the base, middle, and top, these, so now that there is a clearly legible base, middle, and top, with the middle of the east and west pavilions being clad in stone and reflecting the vertical expression of the historic building, which is defined by paired windows. Here, it's defined by the use of stone. At the top, the, the, between the, the middle and the top, there was the, the connection between the two was made much more complicated to reflect the complicated roof line of the Chateau Laurier. So the, the stone from below and bronze and glass panels between now interlace that reflects the richly detailed cornice of the hotel and the complex connection between the walls and the roof of the historic building. In addition, granite, granite piers were introduced at the base of the connector because the east pavilion has granite piers. That's, that's the 1927-29 addition, so those were introduced, again, as a reference back to the, back to the chateau. The corners of the top of the, the top two stories, so above the, the middle portion, which is defined by the, the elements that echo the vertical, vertical elements of the chateau, that the corners are chopped out to kind of reflect the complexity of the roof line. There's been darker fins added to the upper two stories that reflect the dark, the dark walls, or the dark roof of the, of the original Chateau Laurier and provide the contrast between the two. They, there's now a cutout portion of the east pavilion that reflects the Oriole windows on the west, on the east and west façades, and the, the spacing of the mullions at the base of the west facade echoes the, the, the spacing of the ground floor windows of the hotel. So these were, and the, again, the, the building setback from the property line is now, is not all the same, again, further reflecting the sort of, the uneven character of, of the walls of the chateau. So those are the, the major moves that were accomplished through this collaborative design process and through the recommendations of the UDRP, and that is, those, all those design elements were, are in the, the version that was presented to committee in June. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two further questions. One, which is, how do you perceive the NCC's position relating to the FLUDA and their, the matter which they chose not to involve themselves? How does, what is the city staff perception of the matter they, they didn't call in oversight for, for this process?
Mr. Mayor, factually, the National Capital Commission has said to us they have no authority over the design, except as it relates to the use of federal land. So where the use of federal land is required for some of the connecting points, where the use of federal land is required during any point of construction for easements or access, that is their authority. They've said that. I don't think staff can speculate or comment on this. That's a legal matter that we can't speak for the National Capital Commission.
Okay. And my final question relates to Standard 11. So I want to be clear and understand, so Standard 11 is something council approved in terms of a set of guidelines in 2008. The point A and B are what matters. The conserve the heritage value of the existing and of an addition, and B, that it be compatible and subordinate. Can we clarify if that tool was used and respected as part of our review of that, this application?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of the standards and guidelines, Parks Canada standards and guidelines, city, city heritage staff uses those standards and guidelines when we assess every application to a, to alter a heritage building throughout the entire city. So yes, we did, we did look at Standard 11, and when we were assessing, assessing the, the intervention proposed for the, for the, for the Chateau Laurier in this, in this instance. Standard 11, just to reiterate, it is, has two parts. Part A is conserve the heritage value and character-defining elements when creating new additions to an historic place. Again, the proposed addition is separate from the heritage, from the heritage building and only touches it lightly, so there is no part of the actual physical structure of the, there's very little part of the physical structure that is affected by, by the addition, and all of its character-defining elements will remain. The addition is attached on the west to an elevator bank, and on the east, very lightly to, to a, to a, to a wall which cannot be considered to be character-defining. So there, there, the application meets Standard 11 in Standard A, and 11B is make the new work physically and visually compatible with, subordinate to, and can distinguishable from the historic place. Again, the application meets Standard 11B because its materials, stone, dark-colored bronze, and glass are compatible with the, the stone and glass of the, stone of the chateau, and the bronze, the bronze metal reflects the, the, the roof, and, and the, and the glass portions, which have been significantly reduced since the introduction of the original design, again, are compatible with the materials of the chateau.
Maybe, maybe, Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but I'm, you said that you follow the guidelines, and you're giving us very clear details. I'm okay with the information. I wanted to clarify that you had used the Standard 11, and hopefully, you know, maybe colleagues will have specific questions on that. Just to wrap up on the context of the motion, so I'm bringing forward a motion, which is the only tool that would give us the opportunity to not allow this application to go forward. The, I'm just following, the reason for, for the motion today is really specific to, we gave political directions in June of 2018, and at that time, staff were comfortable with the application. We put it, put in some criterias, and the purpose of today's motion.
Right, point of order by Counselor Luloff?
Point of order, question to staff, is this, is it true what Counselor Flurry is saying, that this is the only mechanism by which this heritage permit can be revoked?
Counselor Luloff, that's, that's not a point of order, but you can raise it when you come to speak, because you're on the list. Thank you. Here, if you could just, you have one last, because you've got 30 seconds. Microphone for Counselor Flurry. Mr. Clerk, can you find out if there's someone in the booth working the microphone, if whoever that is could stay there, because this is very frustrating?
So just to wrap up, and sorry, I got, got stopped here, but the, the reality is, we gave a political direction to a staff report, and it's hard for staff to interpret that political direction. So that's why I believe this body is the, the right one to make the decision on, was the intent of that motion passed?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tierney.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have about six questions here, maybe seven. First of all, when this first all happened back in 2018, I believe it was a decision of Counselor Neuspom, Barry Podowsky, and I'm unsure of the Counselor for the area, Flurry. This motion was constructed. My question is, is this anything out of the ordinary? Because I find it a very weird situation that it was so open-ended.
Mr. Mayor, I have to ask the counselor for clarification of the question, because I'm not sure I clearly heard what was asked, so.
Well, I think we're here today simply because of the fact it was a built heritage subcommittee decision that didn't really leave the parameters closed. There was an opportunity for tweaking. That style of motion, is this something new, or have we seen anything like this in the past? Recognizing this is very iconic building, and it's something that is, we don't deal with every day.
Mr. Mayor, under the Ontario Heritage Act, it does permit the approval of a heritage permit with conditions. The fact that council not taking staff's, staff's advice, set their own conditions is correct. It is allowable. I haven't seen this situation, but as you appreciate, I haven't been here that long, Ms. Koots, and who has been here the longest of us, I don't believe we've seen, I don't believe we've seen another situation like that. And then she's nodding.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. We've butted heads on other situations of heritage value, like Buck and Road, and we saw what happened there, so I won't get in the weeds on that. But when it comes to this specific application, or any application that enters our doors as ward counselors, typically, people or proponents that are coming forward will come visit with the counselor and discuss the item in advance to see what the, the temperature is in the room. Do we know if the local counselor for the area was informed and actually engaged with this group?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure we as staff can answer that question, because we wouldn't have been in the room if that had happened. Unless Mr. Curry can correct me, I don't, I don't have that answer.
Sorry, Counselor Tierney through the mayor. Could you clarify which group you're referring to?
Sure. So typically, if something is coming to our neighborhoods within our ward, an applicant will come forward during pre-planning or, or before they actually put their application in to discuss things with the ward counselor. We register it in the lobby registry. Do we know if the local ward counselor actually had the opportunity to discuss things in advance of them coming forward with their application?
Sorry. Counselor has, Counselor Tierney has the floor. Counselor Tierney has the floor.
I can't ask him directly.
Counselor Brockington.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's fair to say we can't answer that question.
If you don't have an answer, that's fine.
And that's, that's fair. I'm just asking the question, unfortunately, we can't debate, so I can't ask the question directly. When it comes to the versions that were proposed, I just have to have a better understanding when it comes to built heritage subcommittee that made the decision to have this motion forward. There is five revisions. So for every revision that came back, just to keep it in plain English, what happened with those revisions? Did they come back to built heritage subcommittee? And I'm asking these questions specifically for a reason. Who was involved in, and when they received those versions back, on where they would go from there, if they rejected or not?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Mr. Curry to talk about the, the versions when they went to built heritage subcommittee, but I'm also going to ask him to, to talk about when they went to the urban design review panel as well, please.
Oh, yeah, I have to turn it back on.
Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that there were five versions that were public. There have been multiple iterations, as I said in my earlier remarks, of sketches, elevations, that have been shared over the last three years amongst staff and review internally. We have gone to the urban design review panel five times, so we went prior to coming forward last year, last June, to built heritage subcommittee and to, to planning committee. We went to the urban design review panel four times at that time, and then we've gone forward with the final. forward with the final version this past spring to the urban design review panel.
Sorry, just to be clear. So every version that came back, came to which committee or group?
There has only been one, the version that we brought forward, Mayor, to council last June, that came to built heritage subcommittee, planning committee, and council. That's the one that was approved, subject to the conditions. We're now, we've now brought forward a second version, but those are the only two that have ever been before legislative body.
So on that, supposing this motion by councillor Fleury passes today, this may be more of a legal question. What are the implications from a building perspective? Because I know there's a lot of people that were very concerned about version one and version two, the number of rooms, the sizing, the mass, and it's reduced dramatically since then. So what will happen in a situation if we pass this today? What's the likelihood, if this goes to LPAT, or to quasi-OMB, whatever you want to call it, that they'll have success and they can change versions? I don't know who answers this question.
Mr. Mark's microphone, please.
Mr. Mayor, there is no appeal right that exists anymore with respect to the heritage application. There was a referral right that existed last June, if LARCO was not content with the decision of council. That had to be exercised within 30 days, so that right has expired. So there are two possibl-- well, there's actually the three possibilities that was outlined in the memo from legal. First, they can make a new heritage application, and that could be a new drawing, or that could be a past drawing. Secondly, they could challenge it in court at this point, and on the basis that I discussed, they'd do an application to superior court. The third choice would be, they need to go to the committee of adjustment in any event, so they might wait till they get to the committee of adjustment, and then seek a building permit. And if they refuse the building permit on the basis of this motion having succeeded, they could then appeal that to divisional court. Of those three options, of course, the final decision is with LARCO. The one that, in my opinion, is most likely, is they will launch an application in superior court.
So it sounds like they could go one through five. They can kind of do whatever they want, based on the outcome of this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, they have a range of options. As I just said, in my opinion, the most likely option is to seek a declaration through superior court, that they have a valid and subsisting heritage permit.
We get this question a lot from a lot of our constituency, about Lord Elgin Hotel. And I'm just saying this because we've gone through this before, but I think it's important to say, they built an expansion onto their complex, or onto their hotel. It looks very similar to what they have. How were they able to achieve that, and we can't force the Chateau Laurier to do the same?
Right. I think you--
Wait for the answer. You might not like the answer, but please give us the answer.
Councillor Tierney. Again, I would ask members of the public, you're more than welcome here, but please refrain from applauding, or booing, or hissing.
Mr. Mayor, the Lord Elgin Hotel is not a designated property, so they were able to obtain a building permit without any permission under the Ontario Heritage Act.
And I think that's the major issue we're all wrestling with here. It'd be very simple if they would come up with the exact same look and feel. We've seen Andrew King, fabulous artist, but they're not allowed to. Would that be an accurate statement?
Mr. Mayor, that's not entirely accurate. It's not that they're not allowed to, it's that there are the standards and guidelines that are applicable, but they do not prohibit any particular design interpretation. The architect of this particular project has worked in a more modern idiom, and we responded to that. If an applicant had come with a more historicist version of this property, and an architect had put that forward, we would have judged it on its merits, according to internationally accepted guidelines, and Parks Canada standards and guidelines. So there was never any prohibition on being a more historicist building. We judge this application based on what we received, in terms of the standards and guidelines, and our experience in heritage buildings.
Right. So when it comes to the Lord Elgin Hotel, where it was almost identical, could they do that exact same thing? Yes or no?
Well, I would argue that, Mr. Mayor, that the Lord Elgin Hotel is not almost identical, and it is also not a designated heritage building. But if the chateau had wanted to more closely evoke its original character in a design, we would have looked at that and determined whether or not it was an appropriate intervention.
Great. And I have another question. It was actually from a constituent, related to the fact, is there, and this is more about probably Tim Mark, is there an opportunity as a partner, if we wanted to partner with the Chateau Laurier, which I know is kind of an odd discussion? Yeah, I know, the time got messed up. I had about 30 seconds left. So is there any opportunity to give a significant tax break, to be able to return with a more historic design to the Chateau Laurier? And that was from a constituent. I'm asking because they felt it was a good idea, and I not necessarily support it, but it's something I think we have to ask.
Mr. Mayor, the Chateau Laurier is a for-profit enterprise, and therefore, section, I believe it's 106 of the municipal act, would prohibit any financial assistance to them.
Thank you. So councillor Luloff is next, because he pushed for a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Fleury stated in his opening statement that this motion is the only mechanism that we have at our disposal to address the issue of design. Is that true?
Mr. Mayor, council had the ability in June of 2018 to have refused the application if it was not satisfied with the design, and could have exercised it at that point. Planning committee had the ability on June 13, 2019, this year, to have directed that it wished different elevations to be submitted. And in either of those instances, LARCO could have, in the one instance, referred the application to the local department, to the current conservation review board, and on the site plan, they could have appealed committee's decision to the local planning appeal tribunal.
For being a new member of council, but who moved and seconded the motion that provided guidance on the design?
Mr. Mayor, that was a motion at the built heritage subcommittee. The chair and the vice chair of the built heritage subcommittee at the time were the movers and the seconders of that motion.
Is the current design, as presented, compliant with the provisions set out in that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's the question that was asked earlier, and Ms. Coutts has responded on our behalf, that in our staff's opinion, the changes have been made, have responded to the direction from council.
Who is the authority that issues a heritage permit?
Mr. Mayor, council is the authority that issues a heritage permit.
Under what higher authority?
Under the, Mr. Mayor, the authority is granted on the Ontario Heritage Act.
Could the provincial minister responsible for that piece of legislation revoke a heritage permit?
Mr. Mayor, the short answer to that is no, but that's not a fulsome answer. What the Minister of Tourism, Sport, and Culture can do is they can issue a stop order for 60 days, which would prohibit any construction taking place, during which time the province could decide whether or not it wanted to designate the building as being of provincial interest. So they wouldn't be revoking the municipal permit, they'd be just doing something on top of it, Mr. Mayor.
That's an interesting new piece of information. Does council have the authority to dictate a particular style to be built as an addition to the Chateau Laurier as it stands?
Mr. Mayor, I'll start off, and then planning may wish to add. So in respect of this Part IV building, my opinion is council cannot dictate an architectural style. It may be different for Part V districts with a heritage conservation district plan in place.
Mr. Mayor, to add, Mr. Mark can correct me if I don't get this correctly. The Ontario Heritage Act, which is the governing piece of legislation, specifies that modifications to buildings can occur with council's approval, provided that they don't detract from the reasons for designation in the original form of designation. This is a very old designation, adopted by the prior city of Ottawa, so it doesn't, isn't a contemporary one like we do today. So it has limitations in its lack of detail, not what we would do today. But I don't believe that the act in any way gives us authority to pick a design style. It's the policies we've adopted in the official plan, using the Parks Canada standards and guidelines as the basis to make our decision, which council would ultimately make.
If this motion passes today, how does this play out legally? How does it play out? In your opinion, Mr. Mark.
So as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, there are three possibilities. One is that LARCO submits a new application for site plan and heritage permit based on new drawings, or based on past drawings that have already been before staff. The second, which in my opinion is the most likely alternative, is they will launch an application in superior court to challenge the decision of council. The third option is they submit their application for minor variance, get a decision on that, and then apply for building permit, and when that is refused, they go to court. The third option would take the most time, and that's why, in my opinion, option two is the likeliest.
Pardon me for not being a lawyer. I know that we've got lawyers with us on council. However, so is the most likely course of action that the city of Ottawa needs to retain lawyers to fight our own city lawyers in court on this issue?
So, Mr. Mayor, no. City of Ottawa would not be fighting its own lawyers. The city of Ottawa would retain legal counsel to respond to a court application by LARCO. The city would also need to retain a heritage planner, and possibly a regular planner, in order to provide affidavit evidence in support of the city's position, because, of course, we would not be able to rely on the advice of city staff.
Thank you, councillor Luloff. Councillor Dootas, please.
Thank you. LARCO has clearly indicated through its lawyers that it will pursue legal action if this motion passes. In the letter they sent through their lawyers yesterday, it argues the city is acting in, quote, "bad faith" if this motion succeeds. My question to city staff is, I have two questions, in fact, but my first question is, when they take the city to court, because it's obvious that they will be, whether it be superior court, or LPAT, or both, can they ask to revert to a previous iteration of the design? And specifically, can they ask to revert to the first 12-story monstrosity?
As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, one of the options that they have is to pursue a different design than the one that was given site plan approval on June 13. So the possibility does exist, Mr. Mayor.
If they argue council has acted in bad faith, and I'm using their words, not mine, from the letter that was sent yesterday, what does that mean for the city's case in court if we are found to be acting in bad faith by the court?
Mr. Mayor, council does have the right to change its mind. However, it is very likely, as was outlined in the correspondence from LARCO's representatives, that if they get, if they, in the event that they launch an application in court, one of the arguments that they will use is bad faith, distinguishing council's decision of 2018, and committee's decision on the site plan, of the decision on the motion, as it's another arrow in their quiver, if you will. If they succeeded on that argument, of course, then they would succeed on their application, and the cost awarded against the city may be a little bit higher, Mr. Mayor.
And I actually just want to go back to that, the option of them reverting to a previous iteration. I just want to understand, what recourse, if any, if they decided to go back to one of the previous designs, the ones that nobody wanted, more so than even this version, what does that mean? Does the, can the city fight back on that at all? Can we push back? Would we have any further options to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would. For them to revert to a previous design, or for that matter, a new design, they would have to go back through the process. So they would have to apply for a heritage permit for that different design. They would have to apply for a site plan amendment based on that design. And in that circumstance, then I anticipate that whoever's representing the city from legal perspective will be able to rely on planning staff. So there are some process and substantive impediments to them going to a different design, but they do have that ability.
Back to the beginning of this whole process, we're spending, you know, potentially hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' dollars to go back to a potential original design. Am I correct?
Yes.
That option is a possibility, Mr. Mayor.
You know, while this motion is admirable in intent, it's misguided, and it misleads the public as to the level of authority council has at this point in the process. The previous council and the authors of the original motion, which set the criteria for design, had the opportunity to prescribe stiffer design standards. This was done knowing full well that the previous four design iterations did not represent the public's wishes. Instead, the owner and their architect were given a blank cheque for design by the previous council, which unanimously approved the design criteria and delegated authority to city staff. Now, as a result, the city is facing hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal costs borne by our taxpayers, and our city's legal team has determined that we will all but lose. I am concerned that if this motion passes, it strengthens the owner's argument that the city is acting in bad faith. And worse, when this goes to the tribunal and court, as LARCO has quite clearly indicated, it will pursue, so there's no question about that, we could end up with a much worse design than what is before us today. If this motion passes, 12 stories, or some other worse design is back on the table, there's absolutely no question about that. And as much as I hate the current seven-story design, I hate a 12-story box even more. I want to make absolutely clear that I do not like this current design. I, in fact, despise this current design. I think it's ghastly. I think it's inappropriate for this particular building. I don't think it respects the public's wishes, as we've heard. However, while I appreciate the desire for our principals to stand, I cannot in good conscience vote in favor of a motion that I know will cost the city hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars, and more importantly, produce the same or even worse results.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your word chip.
I just want to reemphasize a pretty important point, that the Chateau Laurier is privately owned, and that it's the owners who've engaged, the professionals who've developed the project in all its iterations, and the continuing operation of the chateau, the ongoing maintenance, renovations, expansion, is entirely within their purview. The architectural firm that they've chosen is not, does not work for the city of Ottawa, unlike some of the suggestions we've received, in the emails we've received.
It's not a federal building, it's not a municipal building, it's not a provincial being, it's not situated on federal lands.
That's not to say that this heritage application is like any other, far from it. The chateau is an iconic and an important building in our core, and that is why, in the last three years, that this has been considered, and the thousands of staff hours, it has been, the application has been considered in the context of, like councillor Luloff said, the provincial government, and the Ontario Heritage Act, the national historic sites, UNESCO World Heritage Site, the parliamentary, Confederation Square, and Confederation Boulevard precincts, Parks Canada standards and guidelines for conservation of historic places in Canada, the NCC, the National Capital Commission, and the Federal Advisory Committee on Planning, Design, and Realty. And it's pretty clear that, we know that any decision to locate a modern design like this next to a historic design is controversial, and we've seen that in the past in Ottawa, and we've seen that in other cities in the world. Again, the city cannot require a building to be built in a particular style-- Again, the city cannot require a building to be built in a particular style or by a particular architect, and it’s an important principle. Economic development. The owners will be spending hundreds of millions of dollars on their expanded hotel that will generate hundreds of construction jobs in our city, and it’s easy to lose sight of that fact in a public service city like Ottawa, that there are tens of thousands of Ottawa residents that rely on quality jobs that are not federal public service jobs.
Some people are going to say that it’s a drop in the sea, this economic development, but each job is important for our residents. This investment will also increase the economy of the city, and the Chateau will be able to greet more delegates, and there’ll be more conferences in the downtown. It’s good for tourism.
Segment. The motion that we have from Counselor Fleury is to withdraw the heritage permit that was issued based on a motion in 2018 that was, I think, drafted partially by Counselor Fleury, along with former Counselor Neusbaum and Architect Padlowski. And it passed unanimously by council with the support of Counselor Fleury. And on that basis, the motion -- on that basis, I think this course of action is unfair, and I would not support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on council last term. I was part of this decision. I was actually also a member of Built Heritage Subcommittee. So have -- I’ve been on this file for quite some time. And as I consider what’s happening here today and what we’re considering today and some of the arguments that I’ve heard from some of my colleagues and, you know, maybe in particular, some of my colleagues who weren’t here last term, you know, it’s -- we are often faced with decisions that are not easy. And it’s not -- you know, before I got here, I really thought things were black and white, but when you arrive, there are many nuances, and we have to, you know, on a daily basis, consider that. And we all put a different lens on our decisions. And, you know, if I think back, if knowing what I know today, you know, if I think back, I would not have made the vote that I did. It was a mistake. It was a mistake, but it was one made honestly. I, at the time, firmly believed that if we said no again, and we had to make a decision at that time, not because we were going into an election, as, you know, maybe some have suggested, but we were running out of time. And the decision was made because I felt, and the reason I voted for the motion last term was that I felt it was a bit of a hail mary. I, you know, we had asked the LARCO and the architect to go back a couple of times. We weren’t getting back what we had hoped would be a heritage addition that would be distinguishable from but compatible with the iconic building. And I felt that, at the time, they were likely going to appeal and likely going to win. So I was kind of where we are today, as a matter of fact. And I agreed to this original motion in June of 2018, hoping for something better. And it was conditional. That heritage permit was conditional on, you know, the reduced contrast, enhancing its bond with the existing building. And I firmly do not believe that those conditions have been met. And, you know, we worry, will we get a worse design? I’m not sure we could get a worse design, I’ll be honest. And the cost to the city, I mean, you know, just a couple months ago, and I still firmly support this, but we agreed to, you know, that the city would spend between $100,000 and $150,000 to defend a legacy agreement in Canada for the Canada Golf Course. It’s what we do. We have to make difficult decisions. They’re often nuanced. There are a lot of things to consider. Some things will cost us money. People will appeal, or they will go to court. But that cannot be the basis upon which we make our decisions. It just can’t. We have to look at this, and we have to say, do two rights make a wrong -- do two wrongs make a right here? And they don’t. We made the wrong -- we made the wrong decision last time, and we have got to, around this table, and you even have more moral authority if you’re new here today, if you weren’t on this last council, make the right decision. Don’t make a second wrong. Thank you.
Counselor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for staff, a little more clarification on the legal. One is in regards to the letter from Mr. Paulowin that was circulated to council. There were two statements in it, and I wanted to get comments from our legal staff on their accuracy. One was that no bylaw was adopted approving the delegation of authority and the suggestion that delegation authority would have ended at the last -- at the end of the last term of council. Can staff comment on the accuracy of those statements, please?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to the first matter, it is not clear to me that, as an internal matter, it is necessary that a delegation of authority be authorized by bylaw. So that would be my first challenge to that. But secondly, as members of council are well aware, the last item on the council agenda before adjournment is a confirmation bylaw. And the reason why all minutes palates pass confirmation bylaws is to ensure that all the decisions made that meeting have the force of a bylaw. So that is taking care -- all the decisions that you are making by reports today are all confirmed by bylaw at the end of this meeting. With respect to the question or the matter raised with respect to the delegation perhaps ending on November the 30th, 2018, I note -- I believe it’s important to note the context of this report. The context of the report adopted by council on June 27th, 2018 was a heritage application, and one of the other conditions that were within that report was that heritage permit would last for three years. So it was within the contemplation of members of council as they were voting upon the report that LARCO had a period of time to get the drawings, and while there was no doubt, a desire to get it done as soon as possible, they, in fact, were given a three-year period to finalize that. So given that context, in my opinion, the argument that the delegation ended on November 30th, 2018 is not well-founded.
So the motion from last year council is a legal motion. It’s in order procedurally, and any of the decisions from last council are legally and procedurally still in effect now?
They are, Mr. Mayor. As this is a new council, this council has the ability to revisit those decisions.
And I want to go to the memo from Mr. Willis, Mr. Curry, and Mr. O’Connor that was circulated to council on Friday, I believe it was. And the legal opinion is that, given the opinion of planning staff with respect to the conditions, it is very likely that the owner would be successful in obtaining a declaration that the three conditions have been fulfilled. This is if they appealed to the -- or seek a declaration at the Superior Court. Why is staff so confident that the owner, the applicant, would be successful?
Mr. Mayor, you have heard from Mr. Curry and Ms. Coutts the extensive involvement that planning and heritage staff have had on this matter throughout this process, but particularly since council’s decision of June 27th, 2018. This matter has had a review. Mr. Curry said that he felt over the time period since the application in February 2017 that it had had the equivalent of one full-time employee over that entire period. With that kind of extensive review, I believe that the opinion of your planning and heritage staff on this matter is going to be given significant weight by the court, and that’s why, although if this motion is adopted, I have no doubt that the legal representative will do their best, it’s going to be a very tough hill to climb.
Okay, thank you. Some comments. I have -- we’ve all heard loud and clear from residents that the outcome they want is to stop this addition to the Chateau Laurier. And I really can’t believe some of my colleagues who are continuing to peddle the idea that this motion actually achieves that. It doesn’t. At best, we delay construction a few months while LARCO goes through an appeal process, but the motion doesn’t send the applicant back to the drawing board. It does not stop the addition from being constructed. It does not wash council’s hands of a decision last year, although I think well-intentioned. It does not wash council’s hands of that decision. And even worse, by sending you to the courts, we give council and the city even less control of the outcome. It goes to a single judge at an Ontario court. Council did set the bar very low with that motion, and that’s what’s put us in this legal and procedural bind today. And I think it’s an incredible disservice to the public that some of my colleagues continue to suggest that by voting yes, we’ll somehow achieve a better outcome. And I’m not satisfied with the design. It doesn’t capture the charm or the spirit of the original. I said the same thing at the Built Heritage Committee last month. It’s better than what we started with three years ago, but it could be a lot more. The best scenario would be for LARCO to take a pause, to cool off, to reconsider, to listen again to certainly what we’re hearing. But the ability to create meaningful change at this point is within the hands of LARCO and their willingness to do that. I’m willing to continue to work with my colleagues and work with the applicant to achieve that, but the motion in front of us today, if we approve it, does not achieve any of these outcomes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Gower. Counselor King, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting in favor of rescinding the conditional heritage permit for number one, Rideau Street. While the Chateau Laurier’s current owners have a fantastic opportunity to expand their property and their service offerings, their proposed rectangular, brutalist-style box design must be acknowledged to be incompatible with the existing building. Their addition should not be deemed appropriate for the site, given the property’s importance to the history of the city and its national significance. The property has personal significance as well to most. I know I fell in love with this city, our city, when I took my first trip to our nation’s capital in 1986 as a kid, a son of a railroader, and stayed at the Chateau Laurier with my parents. The strong personal connections to that landmark has elicited strong emotions from my constituents, who have expressed near unanimous opposition to the addition, with some characterizing it as monstrous and inappropriate massing, brutalist bite, architectural vandalism, and my personal favorite, which I received, a goiter on the neck of a stately woman. Most constituents have noted that the latest iteration of the design does not even approach universally accepted standards for an addition to a heritage property. But of course, the Chateau Laurier is not just any heritage property. Residents view it as a preeminent example of Canadian iconography, one so important that it once graced the back of the 1973 Canadian banknote. Residents expect that such an important property should be given the proper treatment that pays homage to its history, sighting, and character. Consequently, most of the residents that I’ve had contact with see the proposed design as a travesty. Residents have also told me that this issue is not just about the Chateau Laurier, but also reflects the undue influence that developers exert on our city. I believe we need to listen to our residents when they speak out. But our zoning and planning decisions cannot be based on pure emotion alone. They must be based on policy. Policy dictates that the proposed extension on the northern side of the Chateau Laurier is not only incompatible with the existing structure, but with the heritage context of the site, which is in proximity to Parliament Hill, the Bywood Market, Majors Hill Park, and the Rideau Canal, which is a UNESCO World Heritage Site. Given the sensitivity of this preeminent space in our nation’s capital, it’s important that any proposed design is appropriate to the location. The design as it is currently proposed is incompatible with the historic sitelines of the parliamentary precinct as outlined by Parks Canada’s guidelines. Further, the design does not meet the three conditions that were to be met prior to site plan approval. Number one, the new design does not include a meaningful increase of the use of Indiana limestone cladding on the building exterior to reduce its contrast and enhance its bond with the existing building. Number two, the new design does not include the elements that are specifically drawn from and relate to the existing Chateau Laurier’s rich palette of forms. And number three, the new design does not introduce patterns, details, or geometric proportions that are specifically drawn from and relate to existing elements of the building. Due to this non-compliance in design, city council must act as careful and informed custodians of heritage and not as mindless functionaries of process. Countless heritage professionals have told us that the conditions of the heritage permit have not been met. They have also told us that the property owner has not respected the high value that our community places on the building. As such, for a landmark so iconic and beloved, I believe council should never have delegated authority. And it is time for council to acknowledge this error and correct it. Consequently, I’ll be voting in favor of this motion to withdraw the heritage permit and delegation to planning staff. Thank you so much, Mayor.
All right. My friends in the audience, I would appreciate -- we have a rule that requires no heckling or clapping or applauding, and there are still three or four people that continue to do it. So please, respect our rules and respect the rights of the individual members of council to speak freely without being cheered or jeered. So Counselor Leeper has the floor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for Mr. Mark, if I may. The first question, Mr. Mark, the staff memo notes in point two that, you know, the owner could seek a declaration in Superior Court. As stated above, it is the opinion of planning staff that the conditions outlined in the three specified elements to be changed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It is the opinion of planning staff that the conditions have been met. Is it the opinion of council that the conditions have been met?
Mr. Mayor, the decision of council of June the 27th, 2018 delegated the responsibility reached that conclusion to the General Manager of Planning Infrastructure and Economic Development.
But the conditions that were set out, council has not weighed in on whether or not those conditions have been met.
Mr. Mayor, the motion did not call for council to weigh in on it.
Okay, so council has not weighed in on whether or not the conditions are met. Are we obligated to agree with the opinion of our staff that the conditions have been?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So it is legitimate for council to disagree with the opinion of staff?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, it does happen that council and staff have different opinions.
We have, as a council, heard from hundreds of residents, thousands. I’ve only got -- I think I’ve got 400 emails in my email box. We have also heard from world-class architects, and we’ve heard from heritage experts. Is it legitimate for us to listen to them in addition to staff when making up our minds as to whether or not the conditions have been met?
Mr. Mayor, the weight that is given by council to the input of staff and members of the public and professionals is, of course, a weighting that is done by council itself.
So that is well within our purview to listen to a wide variety of opinions and make a determination for ourselves as to whether or not the conditions have been met? You can treat that as rhetorical. The -- sorry, Mr. Mark. Assuming, and I agree with you, that it is most likely that the applicant, if they are turned down with the heritage permit, will go to Superior Court, I’m guessing, but I would like confirmation, that in order for council to defend its opinion, that we would then go out and we would seek those experts who have the expertise to weigh in on these matters, the world-class architects, the heritage experts?
Mr. Mayor, the estimate of con-- Mr. Mayor, the estimate of cost that was provided in the memo, should there be an application to court, included such occurring.
So we, as a council, if we want to defend our determination that, in fact, the conditions have not been met, it would require the expenditure of resources, but we can find such experts?
I would anticipate so, Mr. Mayor. In my 19-year sense amalgamation with the city, it has only once occurred that I was not able to find an expert to defend a position of council.
So colleagues, we have heard from staff that they consider that the conditions of the permit have been met. I don't feel that they have. The Built Heritage Subcommittee has weighed in, our heritage experts, to say that they don't think those conditions have been met. We've heard from world-class architects and heritage experts that the conditions have not been met, and we have heard from thousands of Ottawa residents that the conditions have not been met. It is our prerogative to hire experts to defend a council opinion that the conditions have not been met. We are not beholden to accept the advice provided by our staff. Otherwise, there is no point to having a city council. It could be run by the bureaucrats. I, I think we may, in the last term of council, we made a determination that, with time running out, we were going to put the critical decision about whether or not to approve a heritage permit in the hands of our staff, but we put in place some conditions that would ensure that the design that would finally emerge would be more compatible with the existing structure. I've heard from no one around this table that you consider that that has been the case. You have the prerogative to say that you don't agree with staff, that it is not more compatible, and the city will defend that view. Take advantage of that prerogative. Ensure that it is council who makes the final call on this and that it's not left solely to staff. Step up and accept your obligations. We don't need to approve this, and I hope you won't. Thank you.
Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have spoke already at the Built Heritage Subcommittee when I voted against the design in a seven-to-one decision, and I voted against the site plan planning committee last month. So I have spoke on this matter and will speak briefly again today. First, I'm shocked that there have been 200 meetings on this and we have the version of the design that we have before us. I have seen a number of pictures from a number of different angles, and I keep thinking back to as if I'm standing in Major Hills Park and I'm looking southbound. I'm looking at the newly-built design, and I see that giant wall. And I can't stop but think how this doesn't detract from the current hotel. We heard Mr. Willis say that these types of expansions cannot detract from a heritage site, and yet I can't see how any rational person can conclude that this is complementary, because it isn't. Everyone that has seen those renditions of the expansion from the park, looking south, have been shocked at what they see. This is not complementary to the hotel. And for those who fear legal ramifications, in my mind, it's quite simple. We have a million people in this city, and we've heard legal bills could be 250,000. So that is 25 cents. It's reasonable to expect that the people of Ottawa are willing to chip in a quarter for potential legal bills. The Built, as I said, the Built Heritage Subcommittee voted seven-to-one, and they did not believe that the conditions set out in the June 2018 motion were met. And I just want to remind council that we appointed four heritage experts to sit on the Built Heritage Subcommittee to join four elected members of council. I'm one of them. And the four people appointed by this body to provide advice to this body on heritage matters said it was not compatible. So please let that sink in. Why is this important? It's a heritage site. It's within the parliamentary precinct. It borders the Rideau Canal, a UNESCO World Heritage Site. We have an obligation, forget the argument whether it's private or public, we have an obligation, whether it's privately or publicly owned, to ensure that a new build or an expansion or renovation is respectful of the heritage. That is our obligation. For those who are critical of the June 2018 direction to staff, you can be critical as much as you want. I supported that delegation, and I stand by it. I believed at the time that that was the right decision. We were going in circles with versions, and there was a fear that it was going to be approved, something that we did not want at that time. We needed time to get both sides back together with specific criteria and expectations. I was the only person who spoke at council in June of 2018. Councillor Menard asked a process question. I said to Mr. Currie, "I'm looking for significant changes." I said that repeatedly, and it's on the record. To LARCO and the owner, I think I can speak for council and say, "We want to facilitate an expansion of this hotel. We want to facilitate an expansion of this hotel in a timely fashion without significant financial constraints to you, but it has to be respectful of heritage." The flurry motion passes. I have a motion waiting in the wings that talks about establishing a four-person working group that would work with staff and the LARCO reps, and the goal would be to help articulate what we're hearing, what we're looking for further financing, sorry, finessing the compatibility and the respect of the current hotel design, obviously with modern flair. To Councillor Gower, who says passing this today does not guarantee a new version, he's correct. It does not. But defeating the flurry motion certainly doesn't get us anywhere. It will be effectively game over. So there is some slim opportunity, if this passes, that we will potentially see improvement. So colleagues, I ask you, many of you said you hate the design, you don't like the design, you've been critical of the history here, or one of my colleagues. Please allow the opportunity to advance this file. One more appropriate design, please vote in favor. We do have that opportunity before us. Thank you.
Councillor Mead, please. Can we get Councillor Mead's microphone, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote in support of this motion today, and my reasons are really quite simple. Number one, LARCO has been clearly atoned deaf to what this community will accept as an addition to our iconic Chateau Laurier, which dominates our downtown landscape. It's an historic building that we clearly love. 200 meetings, five iterations of the design, but LARCO quite clearly, with each iteration, demonstrated that they had no real willpower to change the design significantly to reflect what we as a community would accept. I was not on council last year, but whatever the reason to delegate authority, it's quite clear right now that that was a mistake. The residents of Ottawa, rightly or wrongly, feel that Ottawa City Hall and the developers in this city do not respect what they want. And we've been hearing quite clearly over the last couple of weeks what people in this city expect us to do today. So quite clearly, this issue could end up in the courts. I understand that. But I really believe that the greater damage is to ignore what so many people in our community want, and that is for us today to protect in any way our iconic Chateau Laurier. And the only way we can do that today is by voting in favor of this motion. Tell the residents we understand, and we understand by voting for this motion today. It's the least that we can do for the residents of this city and for our beautiful Chateau Laurier.
Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. Three decades ago yesterday, my wife and I got married, and we held a reception at the Chateau Laurier. And we stayed there, room 671. And we were going to go back there right now, but we're going to wait for the vote, and we're going to wait for the court proceedings to be ended. And I think what that's saying is, you really should be focusing your desire for a change to this design on the owners. The owners are the ones who have the power outright to make a decision to change, and I think people should focus on that. It's remarkable to me that they have gotten away without people around the country focusing on them. Boycott of the hotel, whatever it's going to be, is going to be far more effective than any of the various authorities trying to get involved here. And the reason is, when it comes to a planning issue and heritage planning issue, the city, city council does not choose the style or design. We can't, we normally can't get into that. That's normally left to the owner to do. The reason is pretty simple. If I was putting addition on my house, the last thing I would want is Jim Watson to tell me how it should look. You know, I think it should be done, it should be done independent of that. It should be done according to the prescribed requirements. So we normally don't look at look when we decide the future of an application. But let's remember how we got here. Last June, we were facing a perfect storm. We had an applicant who had the right to demand a decision, or at least a proceeding, and we had the last meeting of Built Heritage Committee for the whole summer, followed by a time when there was very little likelihood you could get a quorum during the election period, and then the lame duck period. So you had a six-month period where council was going to be in default of the application. If we had been in default, that application would have gone to LPAT, and the proponent could have asked, well, would have been asking for version three or four or even two when they went to LPAT. So the only way council could try to get a better outcome, in reality, was to prescribe what council thought would be the better outcome. It turns out, they haven't produced a better outcome. So I'm stuck with this question. You have a very solid principle as to why you don't get involved in the look and design of a project as a city councillor, as a planning committee, or as a heritage committee. But at the same time, you have this very exceptional case where you had a perfect storm that's not likely going to face anyone else in the future in a future application. You had council believing that they were going to get a better outcome by laying down the parameters that they expected to be met. And now, the options are approve the flurry motion, end up with an appeal against it to the court, which may well say, go back to LPAT first. So you go to LPAT, and you spend money. The alternative is, you defeat the flurry motion, and somebody, again, appeals it on the other side, and we end up in the forum on the other side. So to me, the parameters that we required weren't met, but at the same time, we can't reasonably expect to be involved in the actual look and design that gets finalized. So I'm wondering, maybe if you approve the flurry motion, you buy yourself some time, and maybe in that time, there is some chance for cooler heads to prevail, for the community to express itself to the owners and not just to City Hall, for the federal or provincial officials to get involved. In the end, we end, I think we end up at the same point where a decision's going to have to be made, and probably by another tribunal.
Councillor Cameron.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's not very often that my education comes in handy here, because I have two years of art school and a degree in fine arts. But I took a lot of design, and one thing I learned is, I don't think you can really design anything by committee. Sorry for the last council, but that's what happened. They tried to put in some rules of, if they met that, then, you know, it'll be good. And it didn't work. It didn't work because you can't, you can't design by committee. It didn't, it didn't spark. If I want to quote Marie Kondo, "If it doesn't spark joy, then throw it out." And I think that's what's happening here. I think despite the attempt to make something different, to make something more palatable, it's just not getting the message through. And I think LARCO has to be sent a message that you gotta, you gotta start again, that you've gotta do something bold and interesting. And I don't think necessarily it has to be exactly like the current one. In fact, we have models out there that do something different. Look at the Louvre Pyramid, where they did something completely different. And yes, it was a bit controversial at the time, but it was bold, it was interesting, it made a statement. We're not doing that, and I think that that's why it's really important. And I believe Mr. Mark said that that is one of the options, that LARCO could come back with, you know, and say, "This is a new design." So I'm hoping that's the case, so let's go again. Thank you very much.
You, Councillor Menard, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions for staff and then a couple of comments. I just want to clarify on something that was said, that if this motion passes, will they be able to simply move forward in a couple of months? And I guess the question is to Mr. Mark. Is it really true that if this motion passes, it'll just be a couple of months, or might the process be, be longer than that?
Mr. Mayor, I have to say, I don't recall it having been said, that if this motion passes, anyone could move forward in a couple of months. If this motion passes, then there are the three options that are outlined in the memo, and any of those are going to take time. And, Mr. Mayor, I want to take this opportunity to correct an answer that I gave a while ago. I said that council could not make a grant to LARCO. I've checked the Ontario Heritage Act. Section 106 doesn't apply, so council actually does have that ability. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's very good to hear, because it gives us some more, it gives us time. And so I also wanted to raise Councillor Tierney's question as well, and I guess that's to Ms. Coates. I think I heard correctly, could, could the owners of the property bring a design that more closely evokes its original character, and you would have considered that at the time? Is that what I heard in the question related to, I think it was Lord Ogan?
Yes. Again, the, we consider every application on the merit upon receipt. The standards and guidelines discourage mimicking exactly the, the style of the original building, because one of the, the basic tenets is that there has to be a clear distinction between new and old. So you have, you know, the idea is that, you know, anywhere in the world, not just here, but you have to be able to tell the difference between a new pyramid and an old pyramid, if we want to take it to its logical extreme. So, but, but the range of how you can do that, whether or not it's simply expressed through color or something very simple, or it is expressed in a more, you know, it's more clearly expressed. Again, when we're looking at buildings, sometimes when we're looking at a smaller construction, all that we require is sort of a band of glass that announces the, the beginning of the new application, or the new alteration. So again, there's a wide range, and what we don't want is exact mimicking, but we, but then that, and what we do want is something that is compatible with and subordinate to. So it's, you know, again, a balance.
Okay. And so I think I heard that, yes, that they could have come with a design that more originally, sorry, evokes the original character of it, and that it would have been fairly considered at that time?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, through you, Mr. Mayor, there has been additions to the Chateau Laurier in the past. We didn't have what it looks like now right from the get-go. We've had additions to it in the past. Those additions that were formulated in the past, what's your comment on those? How did those come about when they were, when they were done?
Well, the 1920s addition was, again, the building at the time was not much older than 10 years old, so it came about as a expansion of an existing building. It was not a heritage building at the time. Ottawa was a growing city, et cetera, et cetera. It was a business decision, and it was made. Again, the next major addition was the parking lot, which did not have any respect for it. Again, the next major addition was the parking lot, which did not have any respect for any heritage regulations, because at the time, the building was not designated under the Ontario Heritage Act. There are smaller additions since then. One is the front port, I think, where the Zoey's, or, you know, where the bar is, that was reconfigured in the 80s. That went through a process here at the time. We hadn't adopted, or the standards and guidelines hadn't been written. But I won't share an opinion on that. It went through a process. And so, again, like many large buildings, like this building, it's been the subject of incremental, incremental growth. I think that the worst addition was the garage, and now it's gone. It had no regard for anything in particular, except for, you know, it was very useful for the operators of the hotel. So that, again, very typical growth pattern, a little bit here, a little bit there, ends up in something, and then there's a, you know, a need at a certain point to, for renewal, and so the current owners came in with the application, which has led us to today.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful. And back to Mr. Mark, is it true that an option as a potential, is if we pass this motion here today, it may provide us some more time to negotiate with the owners, that councillors, the mayor, staff could have some discussions with them, and talk to them, and try to convince them to come back with something, based on the vote today, rather than going through a costly court procedure for themselves as well, that they may come back with something that more aligns with what we're looking for around here? Is there more time to negotiate as a result?
Mr. Mayor, if I may on that one, legal, what our experience has been in almost any situation that goes through a tribunal is, it could go any one of two ways. One way is you have an applicant who has no interest in talking to us, because they believe their chances of success are through illegal means, and you've heard legal staff's opinion on the relative chances of success under the circumstances, and then you have other owners who wish to negotiate a settlement. Our experience is with both, but there's no guarantee which one they will pick. And I would say, it's fair to say, the tone of the letters we've received in the last 48 hours, or council has received in the last 40 hours, don't send a particularly welcoming message, in my opinion.
And I agree, I agree wholeheartedly, that there is no guarantee either way with what we end up doing if we, if we don't support the motion. You know what the outcome will be if you don't support the motion. You know exactly what it'll be. But you don't know what the outcome will be if you support the motion. It gives you a fighting chance. It gives the public, who has been asking for this, a fighting chance, whether it be a court, or a negotiation, or another way that Mr. Mark has outlined. And so, the question around the table is very simply, do you want another fighting chance to make sure that this represents what the residents of Ottawa want, or do you not? And if you do, then I urge you to vote for the motion. This is something that is of utmost importance, and I worry about the city. If we don't listen to residents in this case, the lack of engagement that that type of thing necessitates in the future is a real risk here. There has never been something like this, and since I've been following city council, well, I've been in council for a little while, but I've followed city council for over a decade now, and I don't know that there's any issue that's, you know, had this many emails, this many phone calls come in, this much attention. I wish there were some others, unaffordable housing and others, but I don't think there has been. So, you know, we, there's a real risk here by not passing this motion. I want people to recognize that in this room, and let's give ourselves a fighting chance, and residents of the city a fighting chance, to make sure that this turns out the way it should be.
Thank you. Counselor Egli, please.
Oh. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start, let's be clear, and transparent, and truthful about what this motion can and cannot do. It cannot change the design proposed, it can only reject it. It cannot force the shadow to support, to submit, rather, a different design, or to hire a new architect. It cannot magically make the extension an Andrew King picture. It can delay the process. It can put the city in court. It can cost the city money. It cannot guarantee that the possible new design will please all members of the public. And it cannot determine the taste, or the aesthetics, of the project. We simply do not have that authority. I was talking, I've talked to many residents about this, and I recently had a conversation with a resident about, "Why are you so focused on due process?" I said, "I'm a lawyer by training. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner, I'm not a heritage expert." And as far as I know, nobody around this table, nobody elected around this table, has any of that skill set. We do have staff that have that skill set, and that's why we hired them, that's why we pay them what we pay them. And we went to them and said, "We have a problem, because we do not, in and of ourselves, have the expertise to determine whether or not the guidelines have been appropriately applied or not. You do, and we want you to go and do your job." So we gave them delegated authority, and I think quite rightly so, to go off and come back and tell us, give us their best professional, expert opinion as to whether or not the terms of the motion had been met or not. And they've done that, and I thank them for that. Many, many hours, many, many staff, lots of time, lots of effort put into it, and I thank them for that. What we're really talking about here today, I think, and I don't disregard it, and I don't disregard the strong feelings that people have, such as my colleague, who had his wedding reception there, and many have had, and many have had grads there, and birthday parties, and a variety of other things. And, but we're really talking about look, aesthetics. That's what we're talking about. And I frankly don't think it's the job of a city councillor to determine the aesthetics of a building. Moreover, putting on my lawyer hat again, we don't have the legal authority to do that. I know a number of my colleagues have said, "Let's go to court and fight the good fight." And I'm fine with that. I fought the good fight for 22 years in court, on behalf of a variety of clients. But this is not necessarily a good fight, because to have a good fight, you need a solid foundation. I think our staff, our lawyers have spoken to that. We don't have that foundation. The law is what the law is. We may not like the design, we may like the design, it doesn't matter, from the perspective of the law. We don't own the property, LARCO owns the property. They have certain rights as a result of owning that property. We may not like those rights, we may not like how they exercise those rights, but they have them. And, you know, the sort of sinister, they're threatening to take us to court. Again, I did that for 22 years. I don't see it as a threat, I just see it as reaching into your toolbox, and seeing what's available to you to achieve your goal. And I'm not worried about the money, whether it's $200,000 or $300,000 we might or may not spend, depending on how this motion goes. I am a little concerned that a number of residents have hailed in and said, "Raise my taxes to fight this fight," but I haven't heard them say, "Raise my taxes so we can, you know, find homes for the homeless, or we can put more police on the street." But to make it a prettier, nicer, better building, let's do that. So that does concern me a little bit. But again, this is about process. It's about process, and it's about trusting the experts that we hire, and, and work for us, to do their jobs. I think they have done their jobs. I think that our options are limited going forward, and that this motion doesn't fix the problem. It takes the Band-Aid off very, very slowly, but it doesn't fix the problem. And we're going to be back at this with another design, somewhere down the road, if it's successful, and some people aren't going to like that design. And I haven't heard from anybody what that final arbiter will be to determine that that design's okay, but this one isn't. So we're just getting on that merry-go-round, and going round and round and round. At some point, we have to move on with the business of the city. We made a decision last term, this is not the Chamber of Do-Over, this is city council, we have to move forward, we have a job to do, and, and I'm quite happy to vote against this motion today, so we can get on with the work of running this city.
Thank you, Counselor Egli. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, as many of my colleagues have said, the importance of the Chateau Laurier, that landmark to this city, cannot be overstated. It is the oldest, most iconic, most recognizable building, second only to the parliament buildings in our city. It is much loved by residents, by Canadians, and by visitors to this city. And I would say to members of council, that we are the custodians of our heritage, and the Chateau Laurier is one of the most important elements of that trust. The public almost universally reject the expansion plans proposed by LARCO. That is abundantly clear. The arguments against revoking the heritage permit, I've been listening very carefully to those arguments around the table. I've certainly heard the personal attacks on our colleague, councillor Fleury, who, by the way, I think are very unfounded and unfair. He's doing his job as a member of council, and is the ward councillor for that area, and it's been a very complex file. I've heard that we don't want to spend money on a legal challenge, because that's money wasted. I don't believe it's money wasted. I believe the public are very happy to make a contribution, because they, the Chateau Laurier is their beloved Chateau Laurier, and they don't want to look at a monstrosity there for time immemorial, and they're willing to pay that. And if it was, if that was the only impediment, I'm telling you, they could raise the money in a GoFundMe campaign in two days to do that legal challenge, because that's how much the public care about this. And I've also heard that we can never find a design that everybody will like. Don't agree with that at all. I don't think the public's being unreasonable at all. The designs have been terrible, they're incompatible. It doesn't take an architect or a design expert to look at it and say, "It doesn't work. It doesn't work. It's not the right design." And all we're asking for is something that we can all be proud of as we move forward together in this city. When I voted last June, much like councillor McKenney, I expected a better outcome. If I could rewind the clock, knowing what I know now, knowing that those conditions would not be, not bring us to the place I expected, I would, I would not have voted for it. I thought we would have a better outcome, and I regret that vote, because it put us in this place. So if I could have that vote back, I would change it. But in a way, we do have the vote back. That's today. This is our opportunity to try and move forward in a more positive way. And I see no logical reason why we wouldn't take that opportunity. And the one thing to me that has been missing in all of this, in over 800 days, is leadership. We can call the people from Alstom to come into the mayor's office and talk about trains, but why can't we call the people from Vancouver, that LARCO, and ask them to come here and meet with community leaders, and meet with the mayor, and meet with our heritage people, and work out a better deal? And if it takes more than... If it takes another 800 days, well, then take the time to get it right. Nobody, nobody says that LARCO shouldn't have an expansion. Go ahead and have your expansion, but do it in a way that is respectful of the community in which you own that building. Because they might be the owners of the building, but we all feel some ownership of the Chateau Laurier. And that's why so many people are here, that's why so many people have written to us, that's why so many people care so deeply about this decision. And that's why, members of council, there is no good reason not to support councillor Fleury in making this decision today. There is only one positive pathway left to council to get this decision right, and it's to support councillor Fleury. So I would implore all of you to make the right decision, and vote yes to councillor Fleury's motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I do have a quick question to staff. Probably, in the last, since the application's been put and been through, I know that there is many, many meetings, and many, many hours, and lots of time spent around those five designs that they presented to us. Do we always have the cooperation and working with developer like LARCO's group? Do we ever, every time we ask them for changes, or any time we, we ask for modification, there was any hesitant, or we, our relationship and working with them was very smooth all the time, from a, from a business perspective?
Yes, Mr. Acting Mayor, we've had a very productive relationship with, with the applicant over the last three years, mostly in the last year, specifically in compliance with those three conditions.
Based on the design, and the lengthy, how long we've been working with them, and every design come, and then we, we have a new, new different design. So last, correct me on that, this is five designs so far, am I correct on that?
There's been five designs that have been released publicly, there's been several sketches, elevations, renderings done over the last three years.
And I know that's probably, you can't answer the question, I just want to remind, remind my colleague at this table, that those doesn't come for free. Every time LARCO's do changes and submit a new design, that all costs money. And people around the table who run business, and understand business, and understand corporation, how they work, these are lots of money and time, not only on LARCO's side, only on the city's, city staff, and our time also, and committee, and staff, and councillor member. I just want to remind, it's funny, I have a, I want to thank the, the staff that they provide me with those days. I asked how many days we've been on that application. And the number is 1,231 days. Since then, councillor Moffett, I say, I think he introduced two new members to his family. This is just to put it in context. Sorry, sir. Almost, I said. But, but put everything aside. You know, I heard it, I heard it, we heard this afternoon from lots of members on council, that now we have an opportunity. Well, you had the opportunity. In the last 1,231 days, we did have the opportunity. Last June, we did have the opportunity. This is not something new. Right now, most councillor, most of my councillor colleagues are coming on the table and saying, "We don't know, we're hearing the, the public." Well, we've been hearing it all along. You don't wait 1,231 days to pull an application, and after all the work, and all the time, and all the money spent, to give a slap in the face to our staff, to our committee, and to a developer that we've been calling the Chateau Laurier. It's an iconic building, and yet, we're treating, we're treating an iconic developer like sort world-class citizen. We're putting all the blame on the city staff, and we're putting all the blame on the developer. You know what? I'm sorry to say that councillor Fleury, and many other councillors that they sit on the, on the heritage subcommittee, they had the opportunity to put their feedback. We had an opportunity to work with them in the last 1,231 day. I'm not going to hamper a lot on that, but there is one thing is, I want to remind everyone. If I am LARCO's, I wouldn't spend $100 million in Ottawa to invest in this hotel, that you guys all call in it, iconic hotel, iconic world-class service, and yet, we allowed them to demolish their parking lot that was looking like eyesore in the whole community. We've been working with them in the last 1,231 days, and yet, we're not really be able to find common ground to work with them. 500 construction job, other than a job creation that create in our community. We keep talking about, councillor Gower brought a great point. All what we've been doing, really delaying the process. It doesn't matter how it goes, it doesn't matter that we agree on this motion, or disagree on the motion. This motion is nothing but delaying, and blaming all council of members here on the fault and the failure how they did deliver to the community. I am really disappointed with some of my colleagues, because they go out to the public, and they start pointing a finger. We are all responsible. We failed in delivering a good product and good application to our, to our residents. But we sit on that table, and we own up to it. Councillor McKenna made a great point, I agree with her. She is a person of principle. She did agree that we did mistake. But you know what? We have the opportunity to be able to work with our partner. I know that building is not bad. We had five designs so far, do I like it? That's, that's my personal preference, but we need to move on, and we need to move forward. Councillor Egli made a great point. Our job is to build the city, not delay, not delay the process. There is no farmer, or homeowner, who live in the city of Ottawa, accept or agree that the government get involved in business more than it is necessary. This is their own building, they own the